Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Justin.
Here.
Mr. Eric.
Right here.
Okay.
Here.
Number. Here.
Alright, thank you. So, we'll start with our public comments now. These are just public comments on any issue that's not on our agenda today. We will have public opportunity to speak on those issues, but that will be later. So, if anyone has something that we're not discussing about like outdoor lighting, the fences, coverage, or chickens, feel free to come up. And then we'll limit everyone to three minutes. Not anyone is super eager for that, so I think we'll move on to the next part. Um, Scott, do we have any presentations before we get into the ordinances? Okay, so we'll move forward to reviewing and approving the planning commission minutes from September twenty-third through twenty-five. Um, did anyone have any comments on those? And I will be honest, I forgot to look at those, so hopefully someone else.
I don't think I had to leave after noon. Uh, I can access it. Can I talk to you back twenty-two twenty-four? I don't know if that's just me or my computer.
I couldn't get neither, so she emailed me everything separately because it wouldn't, I couldn't open them.
I was able to.
I opened it separately.
I did, yeah, I was able to. I didn't see, I didn't have any comments. I thought they were just like.
And through here, yeah, everything.
Any of this everything we're talking about tonight?
Okay, Shelley, any feedback? Uh, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Which do you approve?
I need a second. I'll second. Alright, all in favor? Hi. Hi.
Almost in.
I read a lot.
No, that's fair, that's fair. Okay, so going on to our planning commission business. Uh, what we'll do is all open each separate issue, so there's four issues. Uh, we'll open it. We will discuss briefly from the staff what the proposed changes or what the proposed ordinance is. We'll give time for anyone who's interested to give, to share a thought, a comment for three minutes each. Um, and as we do so, to the extent someone shares a comment that might be consistent with what you were gonna say, if you wanted to say, hey, that's my thought too, just so that we can expedite the process. Um, and then we'll discuss, we'll vote, we'll close that issue, and then we'll move on to the next one. Does that sound alright? Okay, so starting with, we'll, we'll talk about Title ten dash eleven dash twenty-four, which, uh, talks about a proposed outdoor lighting ordinance. Darren, do you wanna talk real quick about that or any thoughts?
Sure. So, as we talked about previous meetings, we wanted to bring orders together for outdoor lighting for sports courts and schools. And kind of the consistent ones that we could enforce and also people could understand, uh, what's allowed and how to help them with their neighbors. It doesn't have to do with anything like the yellowish lighting or anything like that. So it's mostly the sports courts and swimming pools, so.
With the football.
Yeah, well, mainly football and basketball, so. And there, that's the proposed, uh, planning meeting talked about. And, uh, that we would give, I took it one time, and so.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, so we will open, uh, to anyone who wants to comment specifically on this outdoor lighting ordinance. Uh, if you have any, uh, concerns or anything you'd like to say about that, we would ask that we limit, uh, in three minutes. I do use a timer. I am not specific. My apologies. Um, so if you'd like to, just approach here to the left turn. Is that still there?
Right here.
Oh, okay.
They're keeping you on your toes.
Yeah, right. Okay, so you can approach here on the left. Um, any takers?
Do you have a question? I don't want any to come up here. Just how does this affect existing sports courts, swimming pools, et cetera?
That's a great question. Aaron, is this gonna be backwards? Are we gonna be able to make this apply? So.
Retroactive. Yeah, as in the last planning commission meeting, another one of the discussions, we're moving this retroactive to make sure that even those setup will be in those guidelines in the planning commission, saying that the, uh, direction that's closing.
I think it was more like if you have lighting that your neighbor, shining brightly in their yard, and then the city can say, well, we have an ordinance, so it's not like take your light down. It's like angle your light a different direction, right? Or be respectful and turn it off after a certain hours. Like, basic things. I don't think it's remove your light. It's just, is there a way to change the direction of that light so it's not?
I feel like in some of the city lights, they have the little covers that kind of help it point down instead of spreading out. Just trying to reduce a little bit the light pollution and make sure your sport court lights not shining through neighbors' bedroom window, that sort of thing.
The city wouldn't be like driving around at night and be like.
Yeah.
It would be if a neighbor was like, hey, this is kind of an inconvenience. Can we look at it? And trying to find a way just to be considerate of a neighbor is more, right? And then in the future, if a light is installed, make sure the direction of it is not an inconvenience for your neighbor and keep the light just within your own property as much as possible. Like, I have really bright sport court pickleball lights that kind of look like a spaceship, so we try and turn them off.
Well, I guess that's my point, yeah. So, that's my question is that if maybe the neighbor doesn't see it the same as.
Oh, so we.
Yeah, we leave up to Darren, and that's why he gets paid.
We did put language in there talking about, so the idea that can't, we call it a eggshell plaintiff in the law, where if someone is extremely sensitive, we're gonna treat it as a reason. How would a reasonable person respond to this? So we put language in there saying, it does not disturb a person of average in reasonable sensitivities. So, if it's someone who the thought of light gives them problems, yeah, we're probably gonna say, hey, that's not reasonable. Uh, what would a reasonable person think?
Also, with the hour, so if they are gonna be shining beyond the court, are they okay as long as they're turned off by a certain hour limits?
We didn't include an hour. We discussed that. Um, talked about ten or eleven. Again, I have a pickleball court lights. Teenagers are there till midnight sometimes, but not often, right? And then they get turned off. So, it's more if your neighbor's like, this is really, they're on all the time. It's really annoying. I think it's just being a good neighbor, but we didn't add an hour and we discussed about amending an hour. The, the city council could add an hour if they thought, well, we just thought most people would be respectful. I mean, I would be a violator of it. That's what I said.
We also, Darren, could come by and look at our lights and, and, and on time and see how they're shining and if, if he recommends adjustment for it, if they're fine and reasonable. Is that still something we could do?
Uh, the language does state that, um, no lighting may be installed in connection, say, um, which throws any direct rays beyond the property line on which this constructed. So hopefully, you know, you're gonna have a little bit of light that's gonna spill over, but hopefully nothing that's directly, you know, going onto a neighbor's property, is the idea.
Most are installed, I think, now. Like, mine are installed facing down, right? Like.
I mean, ours are tilted.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, it's like this. It's not like this. And that's the complaint. But like, this doesn't light up.
Yeah.
So, that's, I guess, kind of, the difference of opinions.
And you don't really have this occasion to inspect your office.
No.
No, it's more just if somebody calls.
Yeah. I think the only reason for an inspection is if there's some sort of dispute and the city has something, has parameters, or thing to look saying, hey, this is unreasonably bright or unreasonably spreading into other people's yard or not.
Like, you could do A, B, C, D, right? Add a shade, add something like. Make a few modifications to make it work for everyone.
We suggested maybe a timer, so that if they get left on and they just get shut off within a certain timeframe.
Well, they've been on like five times total, so we just haven't been using it. So, yeah.
Any other thoughts?
I just feel like double that, because it's hard for the city to do their job if it's not in writing.
Right.
Where making things great becomes a situation of if you're having a good day or not or selling doesn't like it or not. I do feel like hours are appropriate because it's very black and white. It is consistently after eleven o'clock. I'm glad that the next door neighbor wants to have one at eleven o'clock at night. For me, that's not fun. So ultimately, if you have like peaceful hours, saying that's something to be reasonable and someone being reasonable is two different things. Ultimately, everybody can do a better job if things are very black and white. Nine o'clock, ten o'clock, ten thirty, ten o'clock in the summer, nine o'clock in the winter, whatever that is. Again, if I call and I'm upset, if someone calls about me, you decide it's not reasonable, but Betty says it is reasonable, it just becomes problematic for everybody. And I'm sure whoever works here doesn't really wanna answer the phone and talk to Betty again today because she's not reasonable, right? It's just very clear, you could point to the section that is, you know, is it past ten? Do you wanna take a picture of the clock and the lights? Then everybody can be happier.
Sure. We, we do have a sound ordinance that, um, so not, not necessarily the lights, but we do have a restriction on. And I don't remember exactly what time it is, but there is an ordinance.
Just.
Yeah.
Do we have to ask her name?
Oh, yeah, let's please, yeah, thank you.
She's the last one ready to comment.
Uh, let's actually, if we, both of you could say your name and if you'd like where you, where you live, just so that we can kind of attribute some of the comments, uh, comments in our minutes.
Shelley and Ashley Lawrence, and we live on Howard Street. Manor House, Shady Lane.
Oh, thank you for your comments, both of you.
Well, we did talk about it times. We just couldn't decide, like, do you do it later on the weekends and earlier on the weekdays, right? Like, there's not kids playing pickleball late on weeknight.
No, it, it's definitely something to consider. My, my inclination initially has been, let's see how this plays out a little bit because, you know, as, as everyone who has seen the development of pool ordinance knows, these things can develop over time and as you get more feedback, these ordinances, uh, we will be looking at, oh no, we're not doing pool again, but we have done pool many times. Thank goodness we're not doing pool again. I've not seen that. I've, I've been here four and a half years, uh, probably averaging once a year that we're seeing the pool again. Um, but no, and that's the thing, I think, the inclination is that, you know, by and large, citizens of this city are regularly saying, we want less. Like, when we came out with chicken ordinance, that was the most human beings I've ever seen in this room. Um, and, and the, the frustration was, you guys are way too, just way too constricting. Um, so we're like, okay, let's, let's give everyone a chance, saying everyone's like, hey, we can act in good faith. We can be good neighbors in good faith. Don't overreach. So that, that's our approach here is, let's give some, some good faith guidelines of, hey, we're gonna be good neighbors. We're a city of good neighbors. Let's, you know, the, the, the suggestions is, keep it within your property lines that the cats need light. But we can always revisit this. If we, if we find that this is gonna be an ongoing problem. You know, we definitely did, like Shelley said, like, uh, Justin said, we talked about hours, we talked about timers. Uh, we looked at probably tens, ten to eleven different cities. No, I'm probably exaggerating. At least six to eight or something. Um, and, and, and it was a real variety of, of how specific and how vague. One city had a one sentence like, don't disturb your neighbor, essentially. Like, that's a little loosey-goosey. And another one, like Centerville, take a look at that one. That is, they're saying degrees and cutoffs and angles. I had to have Shelley interpret that for me because she's an architect and I didn't know anything they were talking about. But, um, my inclination is that let, I, I would say, you know, with my, my fellow commissioners, let, let's take a look at this first. And I, I do wanna keep in mind in the future, if we get a lot of complaints, if we get a lot of disputes, to then revisit, okay, do we like the sound ordinance? Do we tie it specifically to time? Because it, it, it becomes tricky, because right now, it, we, we probably need to like, put different times a day for different seasons, right? Because, you know, it, it, it's dark now here at seven, whereas in summer, it's gonna be a different thing. It's gonna be towards ten, right? So it becomes kind of a different, uh, animal if we put time, I think, for the light issue. But that's, that's my personal take on that. But, but good thoughts, definitely, definitely, we're continuing to discuss and, and keep a finger on. Any, any other comments with regard to, from the public to the light ordinance? Once, when twice? So I'll go ahead. I'll close the public comment on that and then open up if there's any other commentary from the commissioners before we take a vote on that. Any other thoughts?
My, my, I think there should be some time in the session.
Okay.
Just so that if somebody is continuously being disrupted because of it, then they can say, well, at eleven o'clock at night, it really should be turned off. And that can be nicely done, right? If the neighbor, hey, it does say, it's at eleven o'clock, which isn't unreasonable that the light can be turned off, you know?
Sure.
Um, anyways, it's, it's gonna be dark at that point.
Right. Is your, so is your proposal like at eleven P M fixed?
Yeah, I don't think warnings, do people go out at a little more dark than the morning? Play pickleball?
They're really amazing if they do.
Yeah.
You know, so it's something like at eleven o'clock, the lights have to be turned off, right?
Yeah, I'm not anti that. I just don't know if we need it, but, I mean, the city council could say, we want a time. They'll look at that, right? I mean, no.
So, so the noise ordinance, I, it is in the notes, the minutes from last meeting, and it's from eleven P M to six A M.
Yeah.
And we discussed last month.
Following that.
Well, we actually talked about ten P M to six A M.
So, for me to, uh, this is not just specifically for recreation. It also has on security, see, taking care of this. And a lot of people have motion to make on the notice.
I don't, I think we, we had decided that it wasn't security light related though.
Yeah.
It was more like sports court and pool than a regular.
Because those will just go on with motion, like mine just go on all night with motion.
Mostly separate. But also, I had a question. Every time we change the ordinance, don't we have to go to the lawyer? Do we have to pay for that? So we might as well just change it one time. Is that a correct statement, Darren?
Uh, it doesn't always, um, depending on what the change is.
Okay.
If, if it's a big change or it's a new ordinance, uh, we usually send it down just to be sure we're, we're gotten on by any teasing on it. If we wanted to add a time, I, I think that's something that we could look at and go through that process and see what's there. And we talked about time a little bit, and then we kept going back to the noise, noise ordinance. So I did not put times in this because I thought we were using the noise one for that portion of it, because we can, we can do something like that.
The ordinance, I mean, we talked about sport courts and that, but the ordinance is not written for that. It's basically, it's pretty broad of the light. So, I mean, when we're all done and somebody having issues, it's all coming back here. And if we have a time on there, uh, I don't need to see. And I don't know what this we're doing, but it appears worth considering.
But isn't this some way we're just recommending the city council anyways? And they, I mean, we can put it, they can decide if they wanna put a time limit or not? If, I mean, in the end, they choose. We're just making recommendations, so.
So, the planning commission would go to recommend sending it forward to, and you can recommend with the option of adding a time or not, and let them come up with a time, or we're already going to do that motion. Put that in there right now, we wanna add a time. Lights, and it'll be out at a certain time.
I mean, if there was a time, you would just follow the noise ordinance.
And you could actually say, this is for outdoor recreation use on rental property or, or something like that.
Yeah.
And so that, that takes out the security lights and those kind of things.
Yeah, you can just add the phrase outdoor recreation.
Yeah, and that's just, you put that in your motion, and we'll just put that down and then add that to it.
My, my initial thought is, if lighting is not being thrown into an adjoining property, I would be opposed to putting a time on it. Because if somebody's, you know, out on a sport court or if they're working in, on their driveway, right? Working on a car, working on a project, like, how, I, I just feel like it's a little too narrow to say, for this specific activity, we're gonna put a time on it, but for everything else, we're not. And so, you know, what if somebody has a, a light on the second story, you know, of their home that's a security light? You know, it's gonna be just as high or higher as a sport court light. And so that, that's just my concern, is we're getting too granular and we're kind of, it's a specific activity that we're saying. I, I just, I would lean towards just say, be a good neighbor. Um, and if it does, you know, continue to be an issue, if, if things continue to be brought up to the city, then potentially we look at it. That, that would be my concern. That's where I sit right now, too.
I probably, the same. I like the idea of adding the outdoor recreation lighting, so there's no, but again, like, I'm not opposed to a time. I just don't know, I just always think less regulation until you have to have it.
I just think we have to, I'm like, do people leave their, about, okay?
We've had three or four, um, on that.
Maybe it's coming up more often.
Is it about a time or a direction?
Direction, it's one.
I, I think we'll continue to see it, right? There's been a lot of sport court construction in the city, and I think it'll just continue. So, it's one of those things I think will probably develop over time. Just like pools. Pools were kind of the beginning, now sport courts are the new pools, so.
I think you can make a motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to whoever. If, if someone's ready to make a motion, unless there's other commentary, thoughts?
I'll just note that, that the way it's written, it does talk about development as well. So it's, it's not, as some, I, I think you've mentioned, it's not specific to sport courts, but it's just outdoor lighting in general. So it does give us some language, which I think we didn't have before, in just general outdoor lighting, um, which I think is probably a good thing. Um, but it's really only that C A, um, that talks about sport courts or swimming pools or other surfaces, so.
I think that's what I did, thinking about, it starts with light hour, who lives right. But I think it's covered a little bit.
I'll, I'll just make a motion.
Do you need to close out of the public hearing?
Well, I do. I closed it up.
Okay.
Yeah.
What time did you?
What time did you close approximately? So that was probably, what, five minutes ago? Close out of the public portion of that specific ordinance.
Did you make a motion to do that?
Uh, okay.
To, to close out of the public hearing, you can make a motion to close.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm in a while.
I'm looking at the public hearing.
Second it, anybody?
I second it.
Alright, all in favor? Hi. Okay, so now that we, uh, I, I accidentally left the car running. I turned it off now. Um, I'll, I'll just make a motion for this ordinance.
So, just to confirm, uh, the motion is to, um, suggest or propose the language as written by the city to the, um, city council.
Correct.
Do you wanna add the outdoor recreation lighting?
Uh, it's in there.
Oh, where?
C A. C A, so, yeah. No lighting.
Oh, my gosh.
Sport courts, swimming pools, yeah. Sport courts, swimming pools.
Yes, yeah.
I think that's it, actually.
Yeah.
I, I would make a motion to, um, send the, the language that's been proposed by the city um, to the, um, to the city council concerning proposed, uh, outdoor lighting.
Second it?
I second it.
All in favor? I, I'll oppose. Okay, thank you. Alright, so I think we'll move on then. So we now are open again. Do I need to reopen with the motion?
You can, you can see what the public hearing is about and move forward.
But just close it, okay.
Who seconded that motion?
Um, maybe, I think. Okay, so we will reopen to the public. We're talking now about Title ten dash eleven dash ten. That's height of fences, walls, work edges. Yeah, six, sixteen.
Okay, thank you. Let me just kind of.
After you.
Um, let me just kind of go back over kind of what we discussed at the last meeting. We tried to incorporate, you, you know, all the comments. Um, so, um, let's just look at this, uh, what it says about front yards. Basically, everything in red is new. And, uh, I think we've kind of melded, tried to meld everything together and, and I, I, I've got, I think, one conflict with one thing, but let's just kind of go through this. Um, so this is dealing with front yards now. In front yards, fencing shall not exceed four feet in height. And then in parentheses, it describes what a front yard is, from the building line to the right of way. So, from the front building line of the home to the right of way is considered the front yard. So you've defined what a front yard is. A fence must be set back at least nine feet from the back of curb. Where there, where no curb and gutter exist, a fence must be set back at least nine feet from the edge of the street right of way as determined by the city. Now, I think this last sentence is a problem.
Yeah.
Um, it says, where there is a park strip and sidewalk, uh, fence must be a minimum of one foot from sidewalk on the property side. That's a conflict with what you said right before. You can't say nine feet from back of curb and then one feet from the sidewalk. We have two types of sidewalks that we approve now in the city. One is a six-foot back of curb sidewalk connected to the curb, and one is a five-foot sidewalk with a four-foot park strip. So, if you've got that situation, that's nine feet back of curb plus one more foot, ten feet now is a conflict with the sentence you said right before it. If it's a six-foot sidewalk, now you're putting a fence seven feet, and that's in conflict with the nine feet. So, I'd just strike that last sentence and just leave it the way that it is. You've taken care of, you've said, a fence must be set back at least nine feet from the back of curb. If there is no curb at all, which there are a few places left in the city, but not many, then the city determines the edge of the right of way, and you set back nine feet from that. To me, that makes sense now.
The reason that was one foot off the sidewalk on, on that other is if that sidewalk ever has to be repaired or those kind of things, if you have a fence right next to it, you can't fix that sidewalk. If you have a foot in between that sidewalk and the fence, then you're not telling you to fix that sidewalk.
So we can solve that by saying ten feet back of curb because then in no case would you ever have a sidewalk or a fence right adjacent to the sidewalk. But, in cases where you have a six-foot sidewalk back of curb, now you've got a potential four feet of space.
Utility to everything is.
So.
Yeah.
We, we need to address that one way or the other because right now, those two sentences are in conflict with each other.
And can I ask a question? Is there ever a situation where you have a park strip and a sidewalk, but not a curb and gutter?
I doubt it, but as soon as you say that, we'll go find one. But I, 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 I don't think so. Usually curb and gutter and sidewalks come together.
And the reason I ask is that the first sentence says, where no curb. And the reason I ask is that the first sentence says where no curb and gutter exists. So if there's no curb and gutter. And the second sentence is where there is a park strip and sidewalk. So if there's not a situation, I don't know if they're in conflict, is my only point.
So you don't have a problem with the way that's written? Do you think it's okay?
At first read, it seems okay to me.
But I don't think it's necessary to have. Whatever clears it up and makes it black and white, I think that's what you do, right? If everyone knows it's nine feet from curb, if there is no curb, the city determines what the right of way.
Darren's point is, is don't put the fence right against the sidewalk. If we've got to get in there and do some work, your fence is in the way. So maybe we could wordsmith this such that we could say, in no case, I mean, we could maybe just say, in no case can a fence be located
Within a foot of a sidewalk.
Within a foot of a sidewalk. That would solve it, right? If we said that.
Then everything is nine feet.
Because now you said, you made an exception to what you said before. You said you can never put a fence within one foot of a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Is a foot enough? That's pretty enough to repair.
They have skills.
I mean, are we mostly, are we mostly talking like if the utilities come in and have to dig up the
And they have to pull out the sidewalk.
Crap or like a buckle.
If you have a fence right next to it, it's, you can't get in it without having to, it's going every time to replace the sidewalk.
But would that clear it up?
Then you're great with it.
I think they can do it.
If you took out the one sentence and added, and in no case should it ever be within a foot of
I think Darren and I can mess around with that and make it sound right so that it's not, they're not conflicting statements and there's no confusion. The worst thing you do is write new ordinance and then people are confused about what it says. It says two different things.
But one way you could do is say, you know, a fence can be within one foot from a sidewalk.
Closer than.
Yeah.
Or minimum, minimum of a inch between the edge and sidewalk, but see one foot.
Yeah.
Or there's sometimes there's language of like one foot, but a maximum of or a minimum of ten feet from the red, you know, something to that effect where it's like
Yeah.
Minimum, maximum, but let's see, there's a requirement.
Let's kind of just wordsmith that, but the idea is you can only have a four-foot fence in your front yard. And I think that takes care of a lot of problems as far as the way that it was currently written. So now moving on to side and rear yards. You're saying, we're saying that fencing in an interior side or rear yard shall not exceed a height of six feet, excluding corner lots, any corner side yard area. And then corner lots in the corner side yard which fronts onto a street, so this is the side that faces the street. A fence or wall located within the side setback is permitted provided the fence or wall does not exceed a maximum height of six feet and shall be located outside the minimum clear vision or clear view as defined in 10-11-9 and is located behind the front plane of the primary building structure. So again, you've now defined where the side yard starts. It starts where the front yard ends and goes back.
Is it confusing just to have as defined in instead of just, isn't it forty feet?
Is it what?
Isn't the clear view forty feet?
Yes.
Or just like put it as defined in, which is forty, I don't know. I just hate when I look in the words and then I have to like
I think it's better probably to
Look another ordinance.
Name the ordinance in case the ordinance changes.
No, I think you can, well, yeah.
Because you don't have to change two of them.
But then you're just like searching for another ordinance, but that's fine. It's good for people, I agree. It's fine.
Yeah, and they're right together here. So they're probably within a couple of pages of each other.
Yeah.
Now
Can I make a comment, Jeff?
Hang on, let me just finish this before we, before we go there. Since such fence, wall, hedge, or similar device, and then I'd add the words must be set back at least nine feet from the back of curb. And then we have that same conflicting statement where there is a park strip and sidewalk, fence must be a minimum of one foot from sidewalk property side. So it creates that same conflict right there that I think we can wordsmith through that. But basically, you're saying side yard on a corner lot is six feet fence. Interior side lot is six-foot fence. And then your rear yard is six-foot fence. So you've defined front, side, and everything else is rear. And now and then the final thing, and then let's take some comments, is that we provided exceptions to this. If the situation arises that we haven't contemplated, which they always do, they can, a property owner can approach a planning commission with a conditional use. And if they can determine, if the planning commission can determine that you haven't materially changed what's in this code, you've just fixed a problem, then you have the right through a conditional use to modify. All right, now, questions?
I've got just a couple of questions.
What was your name? Sorry.
Oh, my name's Jack Kite.
Jack.
Jack Kite?
Jack Kite.
I live on Green Oak. We talked about the line of sight. Now, you said that's forty feet, but that's only in an intersection. That doesn't, is what everybody's explaining that to me. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's a street corner.
Okay, now, you said the front yard can only be four feet. In my situation, I have a front yard, my neighbors, and I bought my neighbor's backyard. So how does that work? How do you explain that?
We discussed that situation. Are you talking about your clear vision line of sight or the height of the fence?
Well, both. Both are gonna play there. Both are gonna play because where it's my front yard, if that six-foot fence goes all the way out to the road, my line of sight is kind of blocked. But you decided you're going back nine feet. That helped. I agree with that. But the six-foot fence, there's a six-foot fence all along my front yard.
This ordinance does not address a line of sight anywhere but on a street corner. That's what it contemplates. We talked about it. We talked about that. And we said, we don't think it's necessary at the present time to go down that road. As far as the height of the fence, let's see. Your, somebody's backyard or multiple backyards become your front yard.
That's true. But up to my front yard.
Yeah, yeah, so probably in that instance, you would go with the fact that the homeowners that are back onto you can have a six-foot fence in their backyard. They wouldn't be limited to a four-foot fence. If they were, there'd be no reason to put up a fence.
But theirs is your side yard, right?
Pardon?
So their back fence is your side yard.
No, it's my front yard.
Part of it could be his front.
Is it flat block?
I've got, I've got two properties on my side that are in my front yard because I see it back.
Okay, so you have
Jack, let me make this one point clear. The front yard is considered, we defined that now from, well, yeah, it can be from the front line of your house to the street. So, yeah, your front yard would be considered their backyard's for that whole distance. It just would be. But I just can't contemplate that you would limit them to a four-foot fence in their backyard. It would just negate the need to even put up a fence.
And I agree with what you're saying. I am in favor of the six-foot fence because I don't want to be looking at them all the time. Maybe I'll have a six-foot fence there. That makes good neighbors. And line of sight was a question I had because we had a lot more traffic and everything with in the last few years than we had prior to all that. With the six-foot sidewalk, people coming down, I could not see the e-bikes and the bicycles and the little kids coming down. So it scared me that I was gonna hit somebody coming out of my driveway.
So now you've got a nine-foot setback.
Right, and that helps.
And on a case-by-case basis, there's a process by which you could ask for some kind of conditional use to modify what's here.
I was asking for that the last six months and I've got any of it, so don't go that, don't go down that road.
So, I mean, there could be an endless number of extenuating circumstances, just like with the chicken ordinance, right?
Tying chickens. They did a number on us.
What was your house number? Just like, I'm pulling up the map just so I can
Okay, it's 1379.
And the street is setback, right? Yours is this way.
Yeah, I saw it, by the way, yeah.
I see what you're talking about.
Now, the fence, the fencing did come right out to the sidewalk, right on the sidewalk.
And now it can move.
And I couldn't see anything, so I asked questions about it and they told me the questions I got from my neighbor and from the city, how come you shouldn't have driven by? I wasn't right. I shouldn't have.
But it's moved now, correct? It's nine feet back now from the
Is it nine feet back now?
It is nine feet.
From back of curb.
So do you feel like you still have that vision problem?
I'm okay now. I'm all right. There's nothing I can do without having to tear out half of this sidewalk and the steps. All I can say, so I can live with that. But I guess what my, my comment is, if we're gonna have an ordinance, let's enforce it. Whether it be, whatever it is, when that permit is issued for someone to do something on a property, all these ordinances need to be looked at before that permit is issued.
That's a valid comment.
Well, there's no use in writing these ordinances. I agree, there's gonna be extenuating situations where you might have to change someone. But if we enforce the ordinances as they were written, we wouldn't have the controversy between neighbors. So that's my point. So I'll need us to go from there. I don't know.
Thank you. That's helpful. Any other comments or questions on this ordinance? I appreciate the feedback. I'm gonna do this, write this, I know, idle. I have a motion to close the public portion on this specific ordinance.
All right, I just want to say one more thing here. My neighbor's a traffic engineer. He suggested three-footed intersection. Because that's what he would read on, that's what they suggest. And intersection from line of sight, not to, you know.
Three feet?
Ours is two. Ours is two, right?
It's four, isn't it?
You're talking about
Oh, height of fence?
Height of fence, yeah.
So he suggested
You know, that's, I mean, three or four feet.
Now, are you saying
Only on a corner lot, height of intersection.
On a, on a, on a corner lot?
Ours is, if I'm reading, so the
The four feet.
Ten, it's 10-11-9, so it's clear vision triangle.
Yes.
In all zones which require a front yard, no obstruction to view greater than two feet in height of a wall.
And it has to be forty feet. Like anything within that forty foot can only be two feet.
Justin, is it between two and ten feet?
It just says, it says, in all zones which require a front yard, no obstruction to view greater than two feet in height above the level of the curb or roadside where no curb exists shall be permitted on any corner lot within a triangular area formed by the street property lines and a line connecting them between points forty feet from the intersection of the street property lines.
Okay, all right. So ours is even stricter than that, what you just said. So ours is two, nothing above two feet.
But that's so three shrubs and everything, right?
Forty foot, right? And that's right on the corner. So that means you can't get your fence in there, you can't
Well, you can't plant tall shrubs either.
No.
Hey, I mean
No. No. Because that's a critical point for people who pull up an intersection and be able to see
See, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I will take a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance. And then we can kind of finalize the discussion and vote.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Any second?
I second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Before we move on, just to correct pace here. With how you mean to talk about you, you said no, or you were agreeing with her, is that right? Or were you
What did she say?
I don't know. I didn't know. You told me no. What were we talking about?
We're talking about the height, the triangle. That line of order. For me, you were saying it's two feet above ordinance?
Our ordinance is within forty feet of that center line. If you went all the way out, nothing on a corner lot should be higher than two feet. Shrubs, you would say no to trees. There should be no trees. There should be, yeah.
You said no to any greenery.
Yeah.
Well, taller than two feet.
Taller than two feet.
Yeah.
Some ordinance is you'll see a written, nothing between two and ten feet, meaning you can have a tree, it has to be trimmed up ten feet above the ground. Ours says just anything over two feet, which means you wouldn't even allow a tree in that forty-foot triangular area. Now, don't drive around the city.
It's consensual.
You try to find everybody, it's a violation of that because there's plenty. But that's what the law says.
But again, if a neighbor came and said, I can't see around the corner.
The city could go out and say, cut this stuff down.
Like it's, you're not, yeah, you're in violation, yeah.
I don't know. That's an attorney question.
We call that qualified immunity and it's a magical thing.
There's your attorney answer.
Yeah, thank you. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
All right.
So any other thoughts, comments? I didn't, I don't have any real feedback other than I think it sounded like you wanted to tighten up a little bit that language about the the sidewalk as it pertains to utilities and then digging in, have enough space to make sure that happens. I have no problem with that sort of change. Anybody else? Any other thoughts?
I agree. I nearly talked about it quite a bit last month and I just, will just say that I think this, whoever wrote this, I think did a good job.
This is better than what we had.
Way better. And it was easy to follow, right? And I thought, I thought it was pretty clear.
Well, I think the ordinance before didn't determine back of curb or edge of street.
It was hard to determine.
Which is what a resident can talk to me about for a hot second, so
There was three different things.
Yes, so like, I think staying back of curb, it's really and if there's not a curb, then the city will come out and determine it, but
But yeah, they have closed again.
I'm violating technically, but we've got a small crowd today. Don't tell anyone.
That, that forty feet only retain, only pertains the way this is written to a side or an intersection, correct?
Yeah, they're intersectioning on it.
If you have, say, in one situation, a driveway coming out to the road and the fence, six-foot fence, going both ways, that does not, I don't have to go back forty feet from there, right?
No, correct. We talked, we talked a little bit about a driveway line of sight thing, but it just, we felt that it was a little bit humorous
Yes.
to try to
We talked about how we used to have that in the ordinance and it was, it was redacted at some point. So this is only talking about where two streets meet like this. Yeah, so it does not, your driveway coming out onto that street is not impacted or affected by this clear vision language.
It kind of did in the way it was written before, but I guess we got a different interpretation on that. I never have seen it yet. Who's supposed to get that from the attorney?
Yeah, I don't know.
Don't know either.
I think Disney language clears it up. I think there'll be less issues. Issues for Darren. We don't deal with those, he does. So I think it cleans it up and I would propose, if nobody else wants to make changes, that we recommend to the city council with taking out the last line of B.
So we vote B and
B and D. And then adding in the language that no matter what, has to be a foot from back of curb.
Okay, that's clear.
From the sidewalk.
Yes. Oh, my gosh. Just ignore me. Let's start it wrong. It's from the back of sidewalk.
We heard what you meant.
Yes.
I wish my kids heard what I
Do you wanna, do you wanna make that vote?
Yes, so I'll redo it and try not to mess it up. I propose that we recommend in the city council taking out the last line of B and D where it states where the park strip and fence are confusing. And then adding in the language that in all cases, a fence cannot be within a foot of back and then adding in the language that, in all cases, a fence cannot be within a foot of back of sidewalk.
Okay.
Second, is it second? Hey, all in favor?
You did a good job, Kevin.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so then we're wrapped up with the height of fences piece. We'll move on to title ten dash eleven dash sixteen regarding maximum coverage of your yard, rear yard. It's one of those days. Okay, so we'll have, are you, Jeff, as well, you'll talk about that one? Then after that, we'll open up again to, to public comment on this specific ordinance. Uh, no, Charlie.
Okay, let, let me just read this for the public's benefit. So this is called maximum coverage of your rear yard.
Do we have it? Hold up, can we scroll over so everyone can see it too?
Yep, right there. So, no accessory building or structure or group of such buildings or structures, including swimming pools, nor any parking space in any residential zone, shall not create more than fifty percent hard surface of the required minimum rear yard space. Rear yard is measured from the rear of the primary building structure to the rear property line. Requirements for sensitive lands and overlay zones may have different requirements. So basically, what the change is from what we have currently is that we have now twenty-five percent of the rear yard area, which was defined as the rear setback. So, from the property line, let's say the set, rear setback's twenty-five feet. So, twenty-five feet back from the property line, in that space, you can only cover twenty-five percent of that space with a hard impervious surface. This now expands that to the entire rear yard, but allows you to cover up to fifty percent of that area with hard surfaces. We had quite a bit of discussion about this, that, that, that whether people should be allowed to cover their entire property with hard surface. Probably not. There needs to be impervious surfaces to, for water to drain into the ground, or, you, you know, overpower storm drain systems and things like that. But, there needs to be a consideration, considering that lots are getting smaller. Homes are not necessarily getting smaller. Homes are being packed on smaller lots. And so, you can see a situation where there's probably a significant number of homes that are in violation of the way the ordinance is written now, with that twenty-five percent business. So, this probably gives some leeway to that. You remember we discussed whether this should include the entire yard, all the way around the home? And we kind of fell back and said, let's just deal with the back and just see how that lands. So, that's the recommendation, fifty percent hard surface total, in the total backyard.
One thing we talked about, I don't see in here, is we talked about if a home doesn't have an attached garage, and it was detached, like, if they had no garage space, because it's an older home and they built a detached, we wouldn't include that in that fifty percent, because I, I don't, I don't know if I could see, the weeds are messy, I just know, like, there's older homes and then they build a detached garage.
I, I know we discussed that.
I don't know, that's not.
I think when we discussed it internally, we were just like, that could become real messy about what is a garage and what's not.
Yeah, which is fine, it's just a question.
Contemplate all of those things into one. But we could go any direction that the competition feels like.
That's what I remembered. And then as far as saying overlay may have different requirements, do we want to note the ordinance in there, since there is a separate ordinance?
That's a good idea.
Right? There is a separate ordinance for overlays.
We only mention that because.
It's a big ordinance.
In that sense.
Yeah, so they know, like, where to go.
Sometimes there's, there's some unique circumstances with that, but I, I think we should add the reference.
Just so if someone's reading it, they're not scrolling for hours.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Now, so actually, Jeff, in what you were, when you initially said, you were talking about fifty percent hard surface, you added the word hard impervious. I kind of like that addition of hard impervious, because we talked about last time, they're developing a lot of surfaces that are hard surfaces, but can allow water.
Yes, there are hard surfaces that, that still are impervious.
And I think those are going to become
Impervious.
More accessible over time. And, and, for me, the whole idea of fifty percent was, if everyone was to pave over backyard, you start to have groundwater issues, and when there's rains, there's storms, it's gonna, it's not gonna have a place to, to go other than just everywhere.
So you like the word hard, hard impervious?
But, but, but that's something we can start discussing. Do you need, I need to open up to the, to the public for comment? Unless you have any other last? Yeah.
I think I did a little research. It's a, probably. Uh, going, we can talk about smaller lots. And that, we can talk about rainbirds, the rainbirds are a lot, even with the things we've got. Why, it's top of the street. And then that just comes down on the ground, so. On a smaller lot, if you go fifty percent, that's there's not much space for the absorbable water on the ground. And then, if it's fifty percent, if somebody wants to put a basketball park on one side of their yard, and go over the house to the fence, that water would end up in the neighbor's yard. There's nowhere for it to go. I, I'm not sure how we address that, because you still do that, it's far away, twenty-five percent. But with smaller lots, it's easy, easy to create runoff situations in your neighbor's yard.
Well, it should be sloped, not to your yard. If you have any issue, you should. Yeah, that's like an ordinance.
There's other rules that say you don't contain on that property.
Do we have, like, is that like a specific city one, or is that, because I know that's a law, I just didn't know, is that granular at the city level, is it a state statute, or is this?
Do you know if that's written in city code, or is that?
Some water stuff is just like.
Yeah, I don't think it's in the strong art code, but we have it.
Because that, it might be worth referencing, it might be worth referencing. You know, in, in no event shall this violate C ordinance, kind of blank.
Then I have a little more, if it's a, if it's a part of the appropriate services, and part of the neighbors, I guess it's a trend now, because it's still.
It lasts for like six months, just FYI.
We gotta figure out that. Because I read that.
Yes, it depends on the sale.
And the, the water won't for them to crack.
So is this, I think, that would?
If you seal it to a point where it's not.
Yeah.
Can't absorb water, then it doesn't count.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know how you police that, but it becomes a hard surface if you seal it to a point where it can't absorb.
Yeah.
Right?
It's complicated.
Is this one of those circumstances where we're probably not gonna go around with these, whatever they have?
Yeah.
But, right? When it goes through, like, one pool and they'll like permit, and there's land, they plan, right? New things isn't forward or really being standardized type of thing.
Yeah, I don't think the plan is to, this is not retroactive, it's just.
Unless it's an issue maybe, right, where there's a real issue.
But the old ordinance was twenty-five percent.
Yeah, we've never addressed this before now.
Yeah.
So this, this is not, this has not been a big problem.
Yeah. It's just like you said, as lots become smaller, you want to make sure their water can be contained, which is an ordinance, but if the whole thing is hard surfaces, you can't.
I think that makes sense to reference something that says, you've got to contain your water on your property.
Sure. Yeah, that, that's a good point, Clark. Thank you. That's very good.
Yeah, because that is a rule everywhere.
Yeah.
Well, that's very good, and an easy way to get sued by a neighbor. So, on that happy note, public, you please, your audience.
Okay.
Oh, I don't, I think we just opened it, you just have to move to close it, right? The public?
Yeah, that's right.
You guys are free to do it. Please.
Couple of issues. One is the water. The reason, the way I understand that ordinance being, in the way it was, twenty-five percent, the reason that's there is to keep the water from running off into neighbors. Why else would we have a twenty-five percent? That's where it's.
Honestly, I don't know. I don't know if that's the reason or not. There's no, there's no shade of reason.
I mean, that's why, that's why I always understood it to me, was that twenty, if they fill in twenty-five percent of their yard, more than twenty-five percent of the yard, that water's gonna go somewhere, and it's gonna run off into the neighbors. Now, for guys, it's built on a hill, we're all on a hill. That water's gonna go somewhere when you start filling in all your backyards. So, I agree, we should put something in there, maybe to the neighbors, or whatever, when you do that, to maintain the water flow, or wherever your water's gonna go. The other thing I would like you to explain to me is, what is a hard surface? Now, when my neighbor put in a swimming pool, the answer I got from the city, because it's more than twenty-five, is they took up more than twenty-five percent. The answer I got from the city was, it's only the footprint of that pool counts as a twenty-five percent. Now, I don't know what that footprint is. I ask, is that the sidewalk around that footprint, around that pool? No, it's just the footprint of that pool. Can somebody explain to me what the, what is a hard surface?
I, I would say it's anything that runs water off of it, not through it. A, a hard impervious surface is something that runs water off of it. So, the sidewalk, in my mind, is a hard impervious surface. It's concrete.
So if they have concrete around the pool, then that's a hard surface. If they have pavers, they are considered?
Yeah, you, you could have pavers that do have drainage capabilities.
But the difference in terms of, if accessory buildings and pools, they're even more inclusive than that.
Yeah.
What's that?
It, it, this is a desk, surfaces, it, it's pools and accessory buildings and.
That's, that's, that's exactly what I'm talking about. But what I got, what? The answer I got was this, no, it's just a footprint pool. So I said, okay, has that wall come up? Well, I don't know. I didn't get that answer, but my, my concern is, my son has pavers, and they did put a silicone, not a silicone, but a epoxy all around it to keep those pavers in place. A lot of people are doing that now. So they don't move around and they don't go anywhere. That's a hard surface. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know, does water go through it? Or does it not go through? If water doesn't go through, it's a hard surface.
Okay, all right, okay. So, anything that the water's gonna run off is a hard surface. So that's new, I guess, huh?
I, I think that's what we're doing, is clarifying, clarifying that, that point.
Okay, yeah, because last, in your last planning meeting, you stood up, says we have never enforced this ordinance, or never addressed this ordinance before.
No, no.
I guess.
This is not.
Which would have been nice to do prior to, but.
Do you have any other comments, feedback on this specific ordinance?
Yeah, I've got one more. Any accessory building, this is saying, any accessory building, so if they put a, say, a pump house in, or something like that around their pool, that's considered a hard surface, correct? You don't know why, you don't know what this ordinance is for. Can you explain, you don't know what that's, what it's for?
Well, I'm saying, I don't know what the original ordinance was intended to prevent.
What is it now intended to prevent?
That you can't fill up your entire backyard with more than fifty percent hard surface. The entire backyard. Remember, the, the previous ordinance only dealt with the setback, the rear setback. The entire, it didn't deal with the whole backyard. Now we're dealing with the whole backyard. It only dealt with twenty-five feet. Twenty-five percent, twenty-five feet. That probably is not realistic in today's age.
I think my interpretation of this is to control the density, the densification of, the densification of lots. That's my interpretation of this. And I haven't seen it like this before. I had seen it where it was like, just strictly, you know, working, a, a lot of things. You can't build more than forty percent of your lot as a whole, whether it's a pool, or with your, you know, your house, or sheds, or surfaces, it's forty percent of your lot, and it's to control the density.
And then in that second, we actually put back of a four ordinance, which included a subsection of that sub-lens in the yard, where the pool is, shall be designed in such a manner as to ensure that all drainage shall be provided. I think we can just drop that into this as well.
I mean, you said that.
Who's ordering this now?
Yeah, and, and it's a sub G, so it's ten dash eleven dash sixteen, sub G. And I think we can seriously just wholesale drop that pool and replace that, you know, define it to a hard surface. Because that's exactly right. That's how I see the purpose of this ordinance, is to sure, as we are creating kind of post-stamped lot idea, most of it is this house, the more we pave over, the more we're gonna, I mean, I grew up in Houston, Houston has had major flooding in the past five, ten years. I mean, it's getting increasingly so, because there is less and less space for water to be produced. And so, that, that's how I see it from that perspective, is we need to make sure that water's more encouraged to go without harming neighbors, but if, if you make a lot of, it depends on that. Any other comments, Harry, specific to this maximum coverage? Maybe, or other things? Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to close the public portion on this ordinance. Is that it?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. So I, I've kind of already made my thoughts known. I, I, I like the changes here, but I, I think some of that additional clarification. So, so the two things I will propose adding is impervious next to the word per, just that additional. Because I, I really think there's gonna be confusion about, if you have pavers that are not epoxy over, I think you could say, hey, that's, that's not what it's intended to do. And, and, and there's increasingly changes in surfaces where you do have, is pervious, the opposite.
I don't know if that's a word.
I, I don't know if that's a word. You guys know what I'm saying, you know, it counts. Porous, there we go. Thank you for having a brief chat, I don't mind where you're at.
I think somebody mentioned the fact that there is some kind of concrete that allows water to soak in.
Yeah, and, and that's the thing, I, I do think that that's been continued to evolve, and it's a long lead. So, the first change would be adding that impervious. The second change would be to, I guess there's three changes. After the, the sense of land and overlay, if the recommendation was to add a, a site nation of this specific ordinance, the next line, I would add, I'm essentially, from the ordinance that, that identifies that we need to pave water, in a proper way without harming neighbors, just that same sub G, drop it in there, swap out, and you've got hard surface. So that's how I approach it, unless anyone else has feedback on those recommendations. Yeah, that's a good question. Is there a separate ordinance that just deals with that idea of conveyance of water?
I'm gonna look at that, I, I'm gonna look into that. If there is, like, a whole section referred to a bit, if it's not really clear, I think plugging that piece in there makes that, that point clear, but.
I did check the record, but what's that? It says, I think the policy is to control the water.
That's 12A, did you say?
But I think that's just on the city level. That's less of a resident level, right? Because I think that's more of you guys need to put in a retention basis, which you guys do. But, but yeah, the, the same idea, but on a, on a specifically a number, a lay number level. And maybe that's it. Maybe we do need a separate ordinance. Need a separate one that, that just clarifies what, what I believe to be a common law principle on the water law generally speaking. Just the idea that we need to make sure that we maintain and convey.
Maybe if you just add what's in the ordinance in there, you need a separate ordinance or it's in there.
I think at very least it, it gets what we're trying to accomplish here.
Just add a.
Something along those lines. Either way, I'm, I'm open to both, but just that, that account just depends on what we've been discussing here. Make sure you have our.
We'll, we'll do a little bit of searching on that and clarify.
And again, I'm gonna be a little more informal than usually. Usually I would like to cut off the public and cut it off. We've got a good person.
Impervious is a verb in the dictionary.
What's the opposite of it? It's unimitable. I like that too. Would it curb it with porous? Okay. Thank you. This is my English lesson. Amongst other things, my math lesson and last.
You make up ones.
I do all the time, just, just asking in my voice. So. Um, ah, that's a good point. I think that, that's probably a dated approach to how we've been talking about it.
So you're saying not for 50% impervious or impervious surface?
Yeah, that's, uh, this, I, I think you were saying, what does hard mean? That's, that's a, that's a good point. Yeah. No, that's, that's a good point. I'd be okay with swapping. Yeah.
It's impervious or impervious or impervious and impervious?
One or the other.
I, I think they're.
Only one can survive.
Are they interchangeable? I like the word impervious.
I did look up.
And it looks me for impervious.
Impervious sounds more sinister. I like it.
It, it sounds more official.
Okay, I like it. I like it. Yeah, no, I, I actually like that. I like the idea of swapping out hard for impervious. So, so then, did you have anything else, Justin?
My, my only suggestion is do you not see that? You want to come back?
I would just say.
Like let's make the changes we're talking about and then.
In our minds, I think we may have all.
Share vision. That's fair. That's fair point. So you guys wanna play with that a little bit?
Sure.
Okay. Do you want us to move? Do we, do you want us to move, you to do that? Okay.
Wait, wait, move on.
Okay. Trust me, I, I have moved, I've tried to move porous through many things. So then. Okay. All right, let's go to our last ordinance to get the very patient. Uh, we want to title 10 dash 11 best 23 chickens, the Harlem Ten, our best fill. Derek, are you gonna give us a word on that or? I think that's going to be to you.
So this is just one marking that.
Uh, props to Clark for spotting that. Thank you, Clark. That was a good catch. Um, do we have any public comments on this change? And we did. It was, it was a part. Yeah. Any, any comments? That was, that was a, that was a public view to remember. Okay, um. I was, I was. All right, um.
Is it not the chicken order?
So like RS12 being one, uh, 12,000, I think we have also. So what was it? The RS12.
So the former thing, this is the one catches that gap. A lot of things, 12,000.
Yeah, yeah, chickens.
Yeah, ours. Most of these are points that, uh, that somehow they need that and they need that. And so we're gonna pick down the 12,000 chickens. We have 12,000 chickens that are going to be. That's in the RS12. It wasn't a pool.
So that would be a catch. All interrelated motion closes up very, on this ordinance discussion.
I'll second.
On favor? So yeah, this one's big for a really good change. I think we clarified as quick as that. So you're, you're just saying let's reiterate that, okay, but in the item.
Oh, yeah, it could be good. That makes sense. As an aggressive. Yeah.
Any other comments? Anyone want to move to adopt with that change?
Straight to.
So we're, I'll play with it. It's another loss testing. There can be so much with the loss. Or just. Those lots are already excluded. So we're in the last number. And now. Now can. So I think, I mean, so I think that's clarified in the body itself. The recommendation is just to really prepare that we can title. Because.
The battle.
Okay, just the title, everything else.
I see clarifying.
Okay. All right, do you have a motion on that one?
Oh, good.
Wait one sec. Do you, do you wanna clarify your moving to accept with the one change Justin suggested?
Yeah, okay.
Awesome. And the executive, come on, favor?
Hi.
Any votes? Okay, I, I'm showing, uh, that's, that's what I was gonna ask. I'm showing that this is there for the business. I thought we were gonna address the.
Instruction.
Is that, is that ready for tonight?
That's not ready.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay. So we continue those. There'll be comments. Okay, so we'll go ahead and keep getting people I am from the past staff. Are, are there any staff reports conditional on this test? We'll all. Okay, awesome. Um, and then calendar, I've seen here my next planning for me is November 25th. Just as the words, I will not leave now on that day. How is everyone else going to see that? So that's the Tuesday, fourth Thanksgiving. You'd be pretty jibby, huh?
I would be, yeah. I'm excited.
That is a hard one.
Yeah, I don't know. It, it's.
Will you move it to December? Or that's late December? The only thing we're holding on is just the.
The, although the one thing we're waiting on is we will be the review of the. September, yeah, getting the. So.
Is that the judge?
I mean, it sounds like we might have a form. I'm, I'm just looking at. All right, um.
Get your people.
Yeah, no, that's fair. Uh, all, all next to me, can you move? Close me. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you guys coming.
Jack, I have to know if you're with Jack here unless you follow my.